Park Planning and zoning board meeting for Monday, September 20th, 2021. Six thirty. The roll call, Edward Leva.
President.
Sandersure.
President.
Hammond.
Here.
Manny Espinoza. The HR team, I'm here as well as SP from the building department. Alright, so we'll just go on the agenda. We have a lot of people here tonight. We'll just go the order of the agenda. We'll come back up to the minutes later, but let's go to old business A. Can everybody hear me? Alright? But these are new microphones. It's like literally the first time we're using. Seven oh two Northeast 114th Street for fence Miller. Yeah, if we have a question, yeah, actually go on up there. I think you have to turn it on every time because it goes off automatically from what is.
Hello, can you hear me now? Hello, first I'd like to thank you all for keeping this game park a beautiful place. I'm here tonight. My name is Brett Miller. I live at seven oh two Northeast 114th Street. I've raised three children there, lived there for 30 years, and I have a beautiful grandchild that's two years old now. And that's why I'm appealing for the fence. The majority of our yard is on the side of our house, a corner lot. And what I like to do is be able to provide a safe environment for her to play in without being able to dash through the hedge. Now, what we have is a six-foot hedge with a 10-foot setback. And we were planning on putting a four-foot chain link fence, which is green and not visible to the road behind that hedge. So that's why I'm here tonight. The original plan was rejected because the setback was not listed exactly. So.
Actually, you were, it was rejected because it was chain link. You are allowed to have a fence there, but it's just, you cannot have a thing. The code, the fence code now, within, whenever it was passed in 2014, whatever. It now eliminates chain links at facing a right away, and that faces the street. So the reason it was denied was not so that you can't have a fence there, it's just that you cannot have a chain link fence there.
Okay, well, that, that's fine. If I put a four-foot wooden fence, would that be more of a acceptable idea?
Yeah, so that's a corner side front, so you are allowed to have a four-foot high wood fence at three feet back from your property line.
Yeah, it'll be 12 feet back because the hedge is already 10 feet back.
Well, you're actually, you're, I think you're mistaken. You're 10 feet from the street, which is the right away. That's not your property. Your property line is actually the 10 feet back, and then you'd be, you'd be three feet back from there. So you'd be 13 from the street if I'm reading this correctly.
Submit with a wooden fence at 13 feet, I'm more likely to be approved?
Yeah, I mean, you're allowed, by code, you're allowed to have a three, a four-foot fence at three foot. And then if you wanted to go higher, you'd have to step it back further into your yard.
Yeah, no, the, the four foot's fine. It's more of a containment for her, for the baby.
Okay, and then the gate, six-foot wood gate, five foot wide.
That's, that would be in the hedge, so it's access for the gardener and to come in with whatever equipment he needs. And it's not really part of the fence. It's, it's gonna be right where the hedge is. So I can draw that up for my next or whatever you can do for me.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you're, first of all, it all, it, it has to be of a continuous height. That means it all has to be the same height. So if you want a four-foot fence, you need to do a four-foot high gate.
Okay, I can do that.
Yeah, so, and then you don't know what type of wood fence that you want? Is it like a shadow box or board on board?
On board.
Board on board, okay.
That's what the, there's actually the same permit was a board on board across the back of the house, so I can extend that all the way around at four feet, six feet in the back and four feet around the side.
So, if, so if you eliminate the chain link and make it four-foot wood.
At 13 feet.
And then it's three feet from the property line, so it would be, I would rather use that three feet. But, but it, but if your parkway, which this says is 10 feet, so it would be 13 from the street, yeah.
Gotcha.
So. And you're lining it up with the front. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, so. Any questions on the board?
No, I mean, I propose that we can approve based on the amended plan tonight, so he doesn't have to come back another time.
Yeah, I'm marking the plan. And you're gonna do six foot on the other side, correct?
Six foot in the back and four feet around the side. The entire side will be four feet.
Okay.
I would, I would second that motion from.
Yeah, so I'd make a motion to approve based on the amended version tonight.
Second, please.
A second.
Any question on the board? Y'all favor say aye? I'm just gonna have you sign off on this, sir, if you just come over here. To approve. We're eliminating all the chain link. Thank you. Thank you, you too. Alright, next is gonna be J and B Management, one one three two zero Northeast 11th Place, revision to permit for windows. Everybody here from?
I'm here.
J and B?
Good evening.
Hello. You already have a window permit. You're just asking for revision to the permit, windows and doors. Can you just explain exactly what the? Ma'am?
Yes?
You explain what the changes are gonna be to the?
Okay, at a previous meeting, I think it was in February last year. We have everything approved, but the window went the same. We had some going up and some on the side. So now we had a meeting and they wanted us to have all the same window facing the street. So that's why we're changing the windows.
Yeah, sorry, I was just wondering what the, I mean, I can step down the gauge and see what the original approval looked like. Usually it wouldn't have been approved if they weren't consistent to begin with, so.
No, it was all the same windows at the beginning, but it's the previous contractor who like switched some of the windows. Now we have a new contractor and now we have to put it exactly the way it was supposed to be.
So you're gonna do these, in the bubbles on the plan, it's the horizontal rollers, right? Yeah.
According to the new plan. Yes, they asked me to put either wood or tiles or something, and then we up for wood to make it look different.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I second. It will go to our structural engineer. When it comes back, it'll go to our building official. We'll call you when it's ready, okay? It'll go to our structural engineer for review. That's the next step. We'll call you when it's ready.
Alright, next is gonna be Building C McKenzie, one one seven eight zero Griffin Boulevard, after the fact. Oh, I'm sorry, J and B. I'm sorry, McKenzie, can you just wait one second? I'm sorry. The J and B management did have another item. Item J, under building permits, let's just go ahead and take her so she can, she'll be free. J and B Management, one one three two zero Northeast 11th Place, temporary construction fence. It's a six-foot high chain link, correct? Six-foot high chain link. That's typical of construction height. Five feet, I mean, I think it's. One, where exactly are you placing the fence? Because I didn't see anything highlighted on the plan.
It's on the, the last page of the submitter. It should be, there's a red dash line. At least what we have online.
And that's gonna have the green mesh in it too, correct? Everybody go with that?
Yeah, I'm assuming there's an open permit, of course, an open permit for construction on the project. Yeah, so. It's fine, so motion to approve.
A second.
Say aye? You're good, ma'am. Thank you very much. Okay, ma'am, Ms. McKenzie, I'm sorry. So we're back to McKenzie, one one seven eight zero Griffin Boulevard, after the fact paint. This was the one with the colors, right? Alright, so you had come in last time and the house was all painted like the dark color?
Yeah.
And, and now if you, actually, I see you've already painted it, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So it's kind of still after the fact. It's after the fact, after the fact.
Yes, and, and I apologize for that. I'm new with the regulations here, and I thought because it wasn't approved color, we could do that and I know how, have the ugly gray house, but it's my mistake and I know.
Yeah, just, we wanted to see all the, we wanted to see all the colors together, so.
Yeah, then the colors are, my, my only question would be the garage door that, of course, I didn't paint yet, and, and it's there. It will have to be the same color as the roof, which is the same gray. Now it has another color, then that will be, of course, as soon as I get approval from all of you.
Okay, thank you. So we, we asked her, she wanted to paint it lighter, and we said that was a good idea last meeting. So now it's all painted these colors, and except for the garage door, you're gonna do the garage door next? Which, you know, fine with me personally. Do you have the colors? Do you, can you actually see it, or should I pass it down? You can see it?
The, the color there, we are using that color, but in, in real, like in reality, it looks a little bit bluish. I don't know. It's called gray, but it's a little bit blue.
Yeah, it looks baby blue and.
Yes, but.
It may, may change with a little time.
We thought it was going to be greater tone, but.
Any questions on the board? Take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Xander?
Second.
That's Ed. I'm sorry, Manny?
Yeah.
Y'all favor say aye?
Aye.
You're good, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Yeah, everybody, thank you for your time.
You too. Alright, next is gonna be building permits A Miami Views Realty, five two zero Northeast 118th Street, new pool and spa.
Good evening.
Yeah, the stand, it kind of looks like it's on your neighbor's property or something like that. Came out really weird. Looks like there's a property line like right here.
Yeah, and everything's backwards, actually.
So we have a 13-foot back setback and 24 and 22 to the right, so it's smack down in the middle. They're still at 39.64 on their lot coverage, so they're still good on that. Have everything, it looks complete. Any questions on the board? This, your driveway ever get completed? I know there were some things with you wanted to pay.
Oh, we decided not to do it.
Not to do the right away?
Yeah, so. Meaning, we, we did the driveway, but we came in front of you to extend the swell and make it wider, and that's what you're probably referring to, but the driveway itself, we did do it, we finished it, and we closed it off.
Okay. Motion on the?
Make a motion.
A second.
Say aye?
Aye.
Here, thank you. Okay, next is gonna be Building B, Gruen, seven three five Northeast 111th Street, windows and doors. You're doing windows one and two across the front. Part of your schedule, and those are fixed window. Casement, casement. Windows and casements throughout.
Yeah, it, is the schedule correct because they're, they're rendered elevation, so horizontal rollers, not casements for the front? Double case. Okay. Never seen that before. Why, why not just do horizontal rollers? No.
Okay.
Usually people don't want to do casement is the, you know.
They do encasement on the front and the sides, so the back is more sliding doors, so basically horizontal on the back, so it's more consistent.
So they're bronze with like a bronze colored glass? Any, it looks good. Anybody have a question on the board? Nope, I'll take a motion whenever you're ready.
Second.
Ned, y'all favor say aye?
Aye.
You're good, sir, thank you.
Yes, I got it.
Alright, next is gonna be Building C, Tassino, seven seven nine Northeast 118th Street, rain gutters. Were you here last time? Is this a repeat or is this another rain gutter? It's a new one, right? Lot of rain gutters, okay. And what color are they?
White downspouts and brown horizontals.
The house did have gutters, but when I had the roof done on March, they removed gutters, so I need them again.
Pretty simple guy.
Same as before.
Technical situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's gonna go to our building official. She reviews on Friday. So by next week, it should be ready, okay? We'll call you when it's ready for pickup. You wanna stay?
Next will be D Mannan, eight seven zero Northeast 111th Street, re-roof tile and flat, anybody? So you're doing an espresso blend? Are you doing another S tile? Is it a flat tile or?
Flat tile.
Another, it's a flat tile. Pretty clear. Any questions on the board?
What, sorry, what color is it? The flat tile?
Espresso blend.
Make a motion to approve. There's a flat roof here too, right?
Yeah, it's like a small portion between the two.
Yeah.
A second. Y'all favor say aye?
Aye.
Right? You're good, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Next would be Building E, Armina, nine oh two Northeast 11th Street, fence. Oh, so there is somebody. Hello?
Yeah.
Four-foot high aluminum fence and self-closing. Okay, so where you want to put it, you're allowed, because that is a side front yard, like the gentleman that was here at the beginning. But we need some dimensions on this.
So I thought my contractor was gonna be here. Did they not submit the dimensions for you?
Okay.
I mean, I know everything's gonna be setback three feet.
I did recognize you with the mask on.
Yes.
How's the pool?
It's, it's in progress, so, thank you.
So, you know, you can go up to three feet to the property line with a four-foot fence. And you can only go out 15 feet or no closer than 15 to the front.
Yep, the bump out.
Which you're right at 29.44. So you want to give us some dimensions or?
Do you really do not have dimensions?
I just wanted to make sure that you, we're gonna say like you're no closer than.
Yeah, the, to answer your question, the drawings do not have dimensions. They're just a hand sketch without dimension, so they look correct.
Right.
But nothing's indicated.
Yeah, I can.
I mean, I can mark it on here and then you could just, you know.
I, I actually have it right now.
Oh, okay.
Would it be easier if I came and showed you?
Sure, come on up. So it is actually on there, yeah. So the dimensions are.
But no, the dimensions from the property line to get.
Oh, yeah, it's three and then 15. Okay, so you're gonna do. In the back, it's not. Yeah, it's more of that. Yeah, that's what the mention was. Not the linear piece, so. And it's four foot. Is it just gonna be a white, like board on board?
Yeah, it shows like a picket fence in the package.
Because it looks, yeah, that's, right? So they're gonna do three feet from the side at four feet high, and then they're not, it's gonna be same height all the way around. And they're gonna do 15 back from the property line. So, we're good? Motion, please?
Motion to approve?
Alright, Mr. Bernard. One zero one five Northeast 120th Street, solar panels. Your solar contractor? Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is a north, south-facing house, south-facing north, but it's north and south?
Yes, the street base is south.
My question is, is we, we kind of have a policy here to try and minimize the number of solar panels on the front of the house that face the street? Is there a possibility of moving some of these panels to the back and still maintaining your system and the?
We'd have a 34% loss moving on to. Uh, we'd have a thirty four percent loss moving on, uh, to the back roof, we already moved a handful to the back. To try to appease the rules.
Okay, yeah, cause we could usually like it the reverse where it's less in the front than in the back. And there's no other location in the back that you could, you could move some of them back to?
Not without a very large loss in production on the system.
Okay. So. Alright.
I missed those calls.
You know, we, we typically like to keep the front side of the houses clear, but if there's no other location. State code is that it has to be on the south or, or west or east side of the, of, of the properties. So they've already moved some to the back. So we look like we're, um, you know. This is, this is the way it's gotta be, so any questions on the board?
No, I'd make a motion to approve.
You have a question?
Nope.
No? Is that a second? All in favor say aye, aye?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Alright, we're good, thank you.
Good to see you.
Alright, next would be, uh, building G, Donoff, one one zero zero northeast hundred sixteen street, re-roof flat tile. Air vent. Placement tile.
So, is this a flat tile?
It's tile and flat. Tile and flat. Do we have a color for the tile?
I meant though, is the tile a flat tile or an S tile?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, um. Flat tile.
Yeah.
Brown roofing. It's another color. Any color you see in the?
Is it, uh, it's called Saxtony nine hundred slate, comma shake and split shake, is slate a color?
Saxtony nine hundred, you said?
It's called Saxtony nine hundred slate, split and shake.
Um, just to move this forward, if you'd like to make a motion, I can approve the color.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the chair's review of the, uh, color.
As long as it's within, you know, grays or charcados or whatever.
A second, that was.
Enter the net, all in favor say aye, aye? Next is gonna be building H, Waggoner, uh, one one two two seven northeast eighth avenue for paint. But just white with a blue trim or charcoal. Dynasty marquee copies. Can you speak to that, um, cause it doesn't say that actually.
I want to paint the roof and doors and the trim around the windows charcoal gray. And then the rest of the house white.
You said the roof? You said the, the roof as well?
Correct.
Okay, cause we have a color here that's called poppy seed?
Yeah, I mean, they just told me to pick a gray, charcoal gray and that was on, within their chart of the charcoal gray.
Okay.
There wasn't nothing that just said charcoal gray, or otherwise I would have got that.
Okay. So it's the roof is charcoal gay, the doors. Well, the doors are, you already have like black or.
They're brown.
Bronze windows.
Yes, they're bronze colored. They're pretty close, it ain't gonna be much different.
Y'all need to see this?
Are you repainting the garage doors or what, what is the finish? And what color are they gonna be?
Same color as the roof.
So the trim color?
Trim is gonna be the same color as the roof.
Right, okay.
It's, it's only about a couple inches wide. Cause I have impact windows around it.
I'll take a motion please.
Akron.
Scarlet Manning, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye, aye.
Thanks Randy. Good seeing you. He'll come up. Alright, next will be Maxima LLC, northeast, one one two three one northeast eleventh place driveway. Okay, asphalt driveway to be replaced with concrete. Square driveway.
The application says concrete square driveway, are these like square pads with gaps between them? Okay.
It's not drawn that way.
Yeah, I was gonna say the drawing is just the existing circular asphalt drive, so. You know, I, I think I understand the intent, it's just that the, the drawing you submitted. And actually, there's two applications, they both have the same way, they're just a drawing of the round driveway. Yeah.
So, so you don't have it drawn correctly, but it's gonna be this exact dimension, but it even.
But if, when you say you're keeping the existing layout, are you gonna have curved edges? So you're gonna have.
Are you going, are you replacing an existing driveway that's there or?
That's what it says, yeah, it says asphalt driveway to be replaced.
So the, the, ma'am, the existing one is in this shape. You're just taking it out and then put, is it just gonna be? Where driveway, four inch thick, so what does that square mean? Where are you like doing just blocks of squares? Okay.
Yeah, do you know, do you know the size, I mean, again, are we talking two by two, four by four, six by?
Are you the driveway, um, are you the homeowner or the driveway? The driveway, okay. I mean, what they're at, I mean, if she came in and said she just wants to do a concrete driveway, we would be like, okay. But because it's concrete. Squares. Would we, do we care? I mean, do we want to? I mean, if she came in and said, this is the shape I want to do all concrete, we'd be like, okay, as long as she met the forty percent, it would be like, fine. But now you wanted to design of squares. We want to see that or do we want to, are we, are we comfortable approving as long as she stays within this footprint? Okay, anybody else?
I, I, I feel like the intent is a little unclear, and so I, I would prefer to see what they're actually doing, but, you know. Again, I suppose if it's the right material and the right. Impervious, pervious percentage, then.
Yeah, how many, how, is it, there gonna be gaps between the, the concrete pads? Orange gaps, okay.
And what do you fill that with? What's the, what's gonna go? What, no, but.
I think she's referring to the thickness of the driveway.
Okay, four inches between a square and a square, and so what goes in that four inches? Stone? Or grass? I mean. I.
Yeah, I just think that it's, we got a lot of vagueness here, and it's kind of. It's, it's starting to concern me too.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know.
You don't know what exactly.
Two by twos or fours or six by six, we don't know what's going in the gap, I don't know exactly what the design looks like, because it's a round driveway that they're converting to square. I'm sure it's all ultimately acceptable, but it would be nice to have a, a drawing, and there's two applications, right, for the same thing? With this property.
The other one, I thought the other one was asphalt.
It's like, it's identical, same thing, pulling out asphalt to put in squares. It's a round driveway with no detail, so it's, they're almost identical applications.
Different properties though?
Yeah. You know, ultimately, it's probably an improvement, right? No one really cares for asphalt, so I'm sure it's. Potentially could look nicer, it's just there's, again, some unanswered aspects to the application. Yeah, but. But are these pre, like, are you bringing? Vehicular pavers that are pre. If you're pouring it in place, that's the only way you're gonna follow the round profile, if you're bringing precast members. Then you're not gonna follow the round profile of the driveway, it's gonna be all this weird stepped effect on the edge.
You're pouring it, right?
Or is it poured in place?
No, I'm sorry, the concrete is gonna come in a, man? Is the concrete gonna come in a truck? And they're gonna pour it, or are you just bringing like a paper and setting it in place? Comes in a truck? And you pour it?
Okay.
Oh, you're forming it.
It's cast, that's what I'm asking, so it's cast in place?
Yes, okay, so there's a motion from Scarlet. She made a motion to approve, I, I will second that. And I guess we can vote.
Okay. So it is, it is a poured concrete driveway with, with some kind of design to it. The, they meet their, their square footage as far as the front lot, I mean, they're right up at the forty percent. And they're going out to the street, so we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
We opposed, but. The motion carries, okay, so that one's good.
Yeah, gotta have some occasional dissent.
Did we have a dissent?
I opposed, yeah.
Oh, you opposed, okay, so the motion carries, um, carries one.
We look at the other application at the same time, cause they're identical.
Yeah, the first one. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll come back.
You know the property?
Scarlet, um, and then, um, order one, had dissented. So, we'll, let's just finish this up. Maxima has another one, something. I don't know, the first one, I'm sorry. We're, we're up at, um, aye. No, no, we, but we were, we were up at. We were just doing.
We were doing aye.
Aye. There's two Maxima's.
Yeah.
Alright, so the next one's gonna be Maxima again, one one six five, one five Griffin Boulevard driveway. Okay, so, on square driveway, existing asphalt replaced. Again, same thing, squares. You're removing all this, all the asphalt? So it's the same thing, they meet their. They're at thirty two percent, so they're fine with their spot coverage. And they're going right back into the existing spot that the asphalt there. Again, the four inch gaps, you're gonna replace it with kind of. Rocks or brass, which both are approved. Any discussion on the board, different? Next time, please try and draw for us, it would be a lot easier. Do I have any?
Motion to approve, motion to approve, no question.
Okay, so Manny then, uh, Scarlet, um, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so motion carries four one. Yes. Thank you. Yeah, you're good, so SB will call you about the premise. Alright, so Perez, one one six one two northeast sixth avenue, re-roof shingles to shingles? So. We don't have a letter here on this? Even though it's in the back and it's a guest house or bungalow, whatever they call it. We still require a, a letter that the ceiling, the engineer, the engineer's letter.
For that one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's a single roof, so. In order to replace it with another single roof, they have to have an engineer's letter stating that it's, yeah. You can't support it, and is this a, is this a dimensional tap, can you tell if it's dimensional or three tab? Uh, shingles? Yeah. Like, detail A kind of looks like three tabs and then. Detail B kind of looks like dimensional, so it's. Not sure which one we're looking at. Actually, the, the estimate says installed dimensional shea.
Yeah, I was just, that was.
It's got homeowner's choice.
Yeah.
Okay, so unfortunately it has to be tabled because we need the letter from the engineer. But they are doing an, an initial tile, and they should, um, make sure that the color matches the color that's on the, I think there's shingles on the main house. We'll table this, can I get motion to the table for more information? Scarlet. Anyone else, second, a second, okay, Ed, second, all in favor say aye, aye? Stating it for the engineer's letter for single roofs. Alright. Building M, Bourdain, one one nine three five northeast eleventh place, gazelle.
Is it just a flat roof structure?
It's, it's actually called the, I call it a gazebo, but it's called actually a lean tube. So it'll be, it'll be a little higher in the front, which is point to front of the house. Towards the back, it'll probably be a little lower. So maybe a foot difference. Again, it's called, it's basically called a lean. Yep. Should get the correct pitch. It'll probably be like a foot and a half from, from back to front. That's correct. It'll, it'll be centered. It might be shown differently, but it'll be center on that back slab. Right. In fact, in fact, the, I don't know what the offset requirement is. It is 15 right now, but just to get a little further away from, from the tree I have there. It'll, it'll move in another two foot. So it'll actually be like 19 foot setback. Yeah, yeah. No, no. Okay.
So you just need to submit it. Right now you just have your lot and your build, primary building. Lot coverage is everything that's on the ground.
Okay.
Your driveway, walkway, paths. Addition, you have an addition on the back.
Correct. At the day, I was different permit.
Yeah, this concrete slab. So I mean, you have a, I don't give a problem at all, but it's just you need to correct the.
So as to what? As to impervious, impervious?
Yes.
Okay, but it'll, it's impervious.
Yeah, but I know, but I meant you're saying your, your previous calculations are the total lot area.
Okay.
The primary building.
Okay.
You don't have the driveway. You don't have.
Okay.
Walkways. You don't have that.
Yeah. I think what he's saying is that the gazebo doesn't add or, or deduct because the gazebo is impervious. What's going to happen? There'll be a gazebo and then there'll be a deck attached to it. So there is drainage there. So there'll, there'll be no concrete slab where the, where the footprint of the gazebo is. And I believe that's part of the code. So it'd just be a deck. So everything still drains there.
Yeah, I know. I get that, but I just.
Okay. You still, you still want the calculation?
As written are not correct.
Okay. Okay.
Probably just ask that you update the regulations to include everything that's on your property.
I can do that.
Which includes the, you know, the driveway and everything like that. It's everything that's on your 75 by 137 foot lot.
Okay.
Would, um, would the board be supportive if I made a motion to approve subject to updated calculations that represent the as-built conditions properly?
That'll be fine.
I would second.
Okay.
Ed seconded. All in favor say aye, aye. And it's got a trellis, it's got like a trellis roof or has it got a flat roof? And what would the?
That'll be part of your impervious then, right? Gage?
Well, I mean, that's the thing is, right? Yeah, but it's still, it's gray. It's kind, it's a gray area, but it's still black, but you're still fine. But what is the roofing material going to be?
Could be, I think.
Galvanized metal. Okay. So like a, like a screen porch, like a screen porch type of thing. Okay. Or shed.
I think we're good with that. So just stop you, we just need your updated.
So.
When you, um,
That, all that, your, that details here on the plan, right? That the, the roofing material, I'm just trying to zoom in. I just want to know if I need to amend the motion to document whatever you're saying. It says, uh, what's it say? Five eight inch CDX plywood. Can you read that? Nails. Belt, tin cap, slate, fiberglass finish. And you're saying this is going to be a, a galvanized metal finish? Okay, so. So can I? Okay. Well, then I, I'd like to amend the motion if, if I'm, we're approving something that's different than what's on the plan. Uh, is that possible? Can I do that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to amend the motion to approve this subject to correct as-built calculations for pervious and impervious and to include the owner's statements, the owner's statements that the roof is going to be a galvanized metal. Galvanized metal roof. Is there a color? Just, okay, okay. Like, like, uh, like almost like a standing seam type material? Okay. Like a, so a standing seam type material, galvanized roof. That's what, that's what we're approving. So SB, do you, can you make a note of that? For the motion?
Alright.
Do I, do I get a second? I made a motion with that amended. So I guess we have to re-approve it or no?
Motion second on that.
And SB, you got those notes?
Yes.
Great.
Uh, sir, you may want to consider editing the, the application because the building department approves it as this and then you get inspected and it's something that's not what's shown. It may come up. So.
Alright, you're good. Thank you. Uh, next will be building in Mansia, one, two, zero, zero, five, northeast 11th place, re-roof tile. Did I miss somebody? Cause I feel like I've gone down the entire list.
Yeah, center in the path. Issue.
Yeah.
Discuss it and it's gray, but it's wood decking. Called in. Even if it's roofed over. Really makes it in the previous area. Correct. When it's roofed over, essentially impervious, but.
Yes.
It's something precedent. We've called it impervious, even though I don't know if that's really.
Can you just show it to me real quick?
An accurate description. I guess maybe in the sense that surface waters can.
You're good. Thank you, sir.
Quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, our building official comes in on Friday. Where we do, once she approves it, we'll call you when it's ready for pickup. No, we'll call you when it's ready.
Was that under Fina Donna?
Yes.
Are you the Donna? Are you the roofer? Okay. Oh, does she, does she work at Walt Lab? I know her. I was like, I know that name. Okay. Interesting. I didn't know she lived in the park. Thanks. Alright, thank you. So are you for Mansia? Your window or roofer? What do you, you're a roofer. Okay. Oh, okay. So, um, you're not on our agenda. But I, you've been here all this time. So I'm, I'm going to talk to you. So let's, let's, if you just wait for a minute. Okay. We have a building in Mansia called in one, two, zero, zero, five, northeast 11th place, re-roof tile.
Wait, one, oh, one, one, eight, twenty Griffin? That's Miss Walker?
Just give us a second. So this is a tile. Color, tile roof, re-roof, color brown, Saxony 900, stone mountain blend. So it's the entire roof that appears. Looks like it's a flat concrete tile. Anybody see a color?
No, I'm just trying to find that color online, but. I mean, it's listed the stone mountain blend, but I don't see a picture in the application. Looks kind of like brownish. Variation.
Anybody, um, want to just Google?
Yeah, it did. It's.
Saxony nine, like, stone mountain.
A range of browns.
The brown?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve? Yeah.
Aye. Yeah, I don't know. Sure. What's that?
Uh, David Redmond, Raymond, he's, I'm going to, he's getting a real discussion. Oh, really? Oh.
That's sweet.
So metal roof's already approved?
Yeah, it was approved on August.
Is this the one that had the, like, they came in to talk to us about the bronze versus the chocolate one? Color.
Right. Well, they changed, they changed it in a week. So he came to the meeting three first. The first time they didn't have the color. They had the color, but it changed, it was changed, uh, but the contractor was agreed. And then it was back to us the second time because the homeowner didn't want the color. So he, uh, we approved that color. And in that, this was the third time because they changed the inno.
Oh, in a ways a building official thing, not us.
No, it, it was a, a change in, in a way they had to go back because it was, what was approved is not what she wanted.
Okay.
So now it was approved on the August 16th meeting.
We did.
For the, yes, for the metal roof.
Oh.
Yes. So I'm not sure. Right now it's, it's a right. So sorry.
Well, you got to watch our exciting hearing. Welcome to the park. Yeah.
Yeah, it's been, it's going through the approval process. It should be pending the, our building official. Or maybe she had comments. I'm not sure. Um, she's been working remotely. So, um, come by or call me tomorrow or email me and then I'll see where it's at in the office. Okay?
Well, thanks. Thank you. Alright, so we have, um, we're going to come to our driveway discussion, but we have a resident that came in that has a question for us. So I'm going to put in a discussion for B, Raymond, what's your address, David? This is regarding a pool. He has a question. Yes. One, one, five, two, zero, northeast.
So, good evening, everybody, and I'm sorry to make you stay here longer than, than you already are. Thank you for serving on this village board. I really appreciate all your time with this. I sit on the Parks and Parkway board and my wife chairs the village art board. So I know you'd rather be home doing something else right now. So I'm sorry to bother you with this. So we are considering putting in a swimming pool. We have a corner lot and I just gave you the sort of drawn out plan on an older survey. I don't have a new survey yet. Meetings ago, um, I was on via Zoom and it was suggested that before I do anything, I come back in and sort of present what we're thinking since it's a corner lot and it would require a variance if I did this. And the other thing that we were thinking about, if we don't do this, because it looks like it might be somewhat monumental, we're going to have to move our water line and do a whole bunch of other stuff. Where in the village code or is there anything in the village code about, um, like hot tubs or swim spas? We didn't go this route. We wanted to just put in, you know, above the ground swim spa that you turn on and there's the current, swim into it. It's not the same as the pool. Where, where would I find anything related to that?
You're talking about something that's freestanding, that's not, that's not like built into the ground, correct?
Correct. It would go on a, on a concrete slab and you just run electric to it and it's, it's, it's just, you know, probably twice the size of a hot tub and you just
Yeah.
Turn the current on and swim against it versus these drawings, which are a real swimming pool.
So we typically like, that would be kind of like an above ground pool. So we would, um, consider it like a structure. So it would, it would be required to have the same setbacks as the, a structure, which is 30 and 30 on the, on the side that you're at. You know, because when people come in for above ground pools, we, we, you know, we have setbacks for those. And that's to protect you and your neighbors so that, you know, you don't take the swim spa and put it right up against your neighbor's fence or something. You know, it's, it's set to.
Um, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, Gage. And in addition to the setback, is it the same thing you've got to go through for a swimming pool with all of that? Or you just have to get the slab and the electrical permitted and then you flop down whatever you're going to put down on it?
It would require the same as a, as a pool because it is a structure. Even though it's freestanding and it's, 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 you know, it's, it's movable. It's still a structure that you're attacking, that you're installing in your side front setback. So it would still require a variance request. Unless you could figure out, I mean, there's, I, you have a lot of oaks. You can't put it anywhere else on your property, correct?
I could, I could put something like that in a different part of our property. Yes.
Okay. So as long as it's not in that 30 foot, 34 foot between your side and the street. You would probably there, you would, you would just need a regular permit. A location permit, you know, you wouldn't need a variance.
Just a regular permit for a swimming pool or for a slab and a?
Well, I mean, the same thing, both. Like if you were able to put a swimming pool somewhere to the rear or the, or the inside of side of your house, you wouldn't need a variance. You could just go come in for an application for a pool and you'd have to meet the, the 10 foot setbacks. Um, same thing would be for the, the movable swim spa type of thing. As long as you're not in that space between the side of the house and the.
Got it. Yeah. With the pool, the issue is we've got these, you, a lot of trees. We have like a 200 plus year old oak tree in the back. And that doesn't allow me to, and then we have our, our drain field.
Yeah.
A swim spa, I could fit someplace. You know, they're like 12 feet long. This is like 45 feet long.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So, sir, the reason, the reason why you would consider putting it on the side here and looking for a variance is with this, that wasn't totally clear to me is that you have a very old tree in the backyard that you don't want to kill. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's, we have five oak trees in our yard. Because of the wonderful codes we have around here, four of my oak trees are outside my tent. Having a corner, it, it looks great when you're buying a corner house here, but when it comes to all the rules, it really is kind of crazy. So my, so I've got four oak trees outside the tent and a very big one inside. And I just, I can't kill that tree.
Yeah.
Right. No, that would be, yeah. I, I, okay.
But I mean, as far as like corner lots go, you actually have a really nice corner lot. I mean, we have people that have 10 foot backyards. You have a 50 foot backyard. So, so you, you actually kind of, you know, you did pretty well when you bought the house.
I'm very happy with the house and all that. It's just anytime you go to do anything, it's like, well, you've got two front yards.
Yeah. Where's the tree?
The tree is.
Like, could you draw it on this plan? Could, can you draw it on the plan? And what's the proximity that a pool could be in relation to the base of the tree? I mean, what's, I don't know. I'm not a tree expert.
Wanted anywhere. I mean, I have an oak tree in my backyard. You wouldn't want an oak tree near a pool.
Like within.
Be in maintenance.
Twenty feet? Would it be like, would it be like 20 feet?
I, I, I would, I would, wouldn't put, I mean, and I have an oak tree in my backyard. I would not put. I, I, I would, I would, wouldn't put, I mean, and I have an oak tree in my backyard. I would not put, uh, a pool anywhere near the, the, the extent of the canopy. Because I would not put it underneath that canopy at all because you're just, and you know, you know, dirty, I mean, they just drop leaves and everything all the time.
Yeah.
Um.
My backyard is mulch and oak tree leaves. That's all I can do.
Yeah.
So for the swim spa though, I mean, could, can it fit somewhere in this back corner? Because I think what Gage is trying to tell you is that. It wouldn't be a, a, a big lift, right? You would come at least ten foot from the back and we approve it. I mean.
And it would have a roof on it? It would have a cover, the, the swim spa?
Um, yeah.
Okay. Cause it's interesting, after you came, were in front of us before, I drove by your house and I was like, let me see. And I was like, oh my goodness, he has all these oak trees. I don't know if a pool is the best thing for these, for you. Um, but you definitely, because of the fact that we value our, our oak trees so much in this village. You have a, a case for, you know, we have given other corner lots, variances. To put a pool over there. So you do have a good case if you wanted to pursue the pool or the spa over in that side.
Okay.
Um, cause other people have done it. Um, and even though you have a big fifty foot backyard. The second you say, I have an oak tree with a hundred foot canopy on it and I can't put the trip pool underneath it. I would imagine most of the people would agree. We don't want to cut the tree. We would rather see a pool. In a side front, but I can't speak, you know, for the board or for the commission. Um, so.
It's a good point.
You know.
Point. I mean, it's, it wouldn't be. It wouldn't be creating a condition that's. That's, you know, much different than other pools that we've approved and there is, the tree is, is a. I don't know if it's a hardship based on the letter of the code. But it's something that i- it's, it's meaningful.
It's a condition of the lot. And then one of the things says is the conditions of the property. So the oak is there. It's a part of the lot. So it's conditioned, actually.
I would, I would suggest that you can put the pool equipment in a different spot than where you have it. I don't think you need to. I think you could probably put that in the, maybe in the back corner of, of the lot or something like.
Assuming this is illustrating the pool equipment here.
It, yeah.
Well, it just makes noise. So you're putting it towards the front versus putting it towards the back. I don't know.
Right. And I think that was just sort of proximity to the electrical and all that. And then on the, on the side where the, the contractor drew in the setbacks from the side. And I'm sorry, I gave you all my copies. Um. What, what would be the issue in terms of this, the side, um, from the property line to the, to the pool itself? If you ask for the variance, and I think he has on there, I'm sorry. Should have made one more copy.
Thirteen feet.
Thirteen, yeah, thirteen to the waterline.
Is that acceptable if with variant, in terms of the variances you've given before?
Well, the, the variances are, you know, you were asking for the minimum variance. So thirteen feet is actually, it's a good, I mean, that's a typical side setback. You know, setbacks, side setbacks are ten feet. So you're, you're really not. You know, you're kind of staying within that, you're away from the property line. Um. Um. You're, it's all, it's only really that side that you're asking, you're not asking to come in front of the house at all. Um, you know, it's, you have to plead your case. You have to meet the four points for variance. Um, the, um, you, you know, you do type, you have a hardship with the trees. Um. Um.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think you're, you're not asking for it for two feet from the property line. You're asking for thirteen feet. I think it's a, it's a healthy setback away from the, the property line.
And a hundred sixteen three. So, so then the other couple of questions I have, I know they just passed a new swimming pool ordinance. Um, at least I think it passed at the commission. And there's a line in there that talks about. Our, the fence we have around the front and the side and the back of our property is PVC. But on the opposite side of where the pool might go is an old chain link fence that goes from my house. Our house is like two lots. So it goes across both of our neighbors' lots. I'm not really sure if it's our fence or their fence. I think based on the survey, it's probably right on the property line. Um, is, is that allowed? Cause they, they added something now and I don't know what this means, but it says. You can have a galvanized, two inch galvanized chain link wire with top rail. And, and this is what they just added and slats fastened at the top or bottom. You know what that means?
So.
Glad it's not just me. Okay. I, I'll have to ask the commission what they meant by that.
Well, but here's the thing. Our code says you cannot have, so the code then goes in the, in the fencing section. It actually limits the, the placement of chain link fences. So y- you cannot have a chain link fence facing the right of way, which is the, in the right of way on the street. So, so if you were to. Take that fence down to put the pool in, you wouldn't be able to put it back up because it's not conforming as it is.
The fence, the fence is in on the, the sixth, the, the street side. The fence is between me and my neighbors.
I think it's this one.
Two houses.
Back here.
It, it would be their side lot and my side lot.
Oh, okay.
But, and it's, and I planted huge cocoa plums back there. So it's all, you can't really see the fence at all, but if.
So your question, I'm, go back to the beginning of the question.
Can I leave, can I leave that fence as is? And if so, what does it mean? To say galvanized wire with top rail and slats fastened at the top or bottom? That's what, that's what the commission just added in the second reading of the ordinance and I don't know what it means. I don't even know what, I looked up slats online and it has like those plastic things that you put into a, like construction fence. So you can't see through them. But that doesn't seem to be what this means fast. I don't know.
So you're, you're allowed to have a chain link fence. So the chain link fence that you have there, it, it is allowed as long as it meets the height requirement for, for a pool. I mean, it's existing. It's, it's, you're not removing it. So you don't have to take it out. And as long as it's a barrier that prevents people from getting into your pool. I think you're, it would be able to be, it would be able to remain. My thing is, is that you have a dotted line that looks like chain link going around on the hundred and sixteenth street side.
That, is that a gas line that you're showing on the survey?
I, I wish we had gas line. There is some kind of, maybe that's the PVC fence then that you're talking about, the one that runs along facing one sixteen.
There's a dotted line here.
Yeah, I, I believe that what that, that line is, the dotted line is what the contract, the swimming pool contractor kind of drew in where the fence was from the. The survey that I used to get the fence. So that, that's PVC.
That's your white PVC.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is setback from your property line on one sixteen.
That's that seven feet.
Yeah.
Okay. So that can remain and, and it's the right height. It's just a matter of making sure that that chain link fences. Um. Is, um, you know, it's, it's, it's higher, it's the right height, which is four feet purple or, or five feet? Ed, you know, up your head.
I mean, they're mostly always four feet, but.
Four feet? Okay.
Usually that with like a latch.
Their self-closing gate. Yeah.
All gates shall be no less than this. They just added this too, by the way. I'm sorry. Um, oh no, that's the locking mechanism now has to be four foot six inches.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, very, the very last question on this, and then I have one more just follow-up is. Um, if I, to do this, I would also need to move my water, main water line coming in from the house from the meter.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is that like, can you do that? I know if I talked to a plumber, they'd probably tell me they can run it like that, but it, it doesn't matter. It doesn't have to go straight in. There's no weird, I can do.
That's, that's actually not us. That would be a question I would imagine for maybe City of North Miami. I mean.
It's on your property, from the meter to your house, do whatever you want.
So it's whatever you want. What it's your, it's up to your plumber.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. And so the, the last thing then back to the, if we don't go through this whole route. If we just do the swim spa with the, with the slab and I put that thirty feet from the side and ten feet from the back.
Yes.
Back from the back.
Yes.
And I still need to get a swimming pool permit for a hot tub? Or is there a?
You would need to get.
No, you have to get, there's.
Swimming pool, you just need to get a permit for it. You're installing a structured with electric and the pad and all that stuff. And you, and we have to locate it on the property. You have to locate it.
We, we don't delineate between swimming pools and hot tubs. There's nothing in the code that, we, we covered that already. There's nothing in the code that separates.
The permit is, the point is the permit is no different, but you're applying to put some sort of structure, whether it's a above ground swim pool.
It says swimming pool and somebody gives me a swim, a permit for swimming.
Yeah. The, the building department may look at it a certain way or not. From the zoning board point of view, we're just going to look at this as a structure of a type that meets the setbacks. What the regulations are from the building department in terms of whether you need a fence enclosure, whether your latch is fifty-four, that's kind of a building issue and.
Got it.
How they would treat us above ground swim spa versus an in-ground pool is up to them.
Okay.
From our point of view, it's just a structure.
For the record, I have asked questions there, a female question there. I'm sorry, I don't even know who you are, ma'am, but I get no response. That's why I'm here. That's why I was here.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, that's why I come here. You guys are the only ones who.
There are just a lot of building code issues that come into play with pools for life safety reasons. And I'm not, I don't think we're.
We don't really deal with that.
Concerns would be for us, it would just be a structure that meets the setbacks and, you know.
The ba, the basics.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
I, you know, if you do apply for a variance and I would just make sure when you update the survey, you locate the tree clearly. Maybe your drain field clearly, because when we look at this initially, we think, gosh, she's got all the room in the world to put this pool back there. So you want to make it look like a real hardship.
But I actually add to what, what Ed's saying, I would hire, I would get an arborist and get an arborist report. They're not, they're not very expensive. And have your surveyor indicate the tree, but then also have an arborist, you know, indicate, they'll tell, talk about the, the size and the health of the tree. I would tell you that as far as variances are concerned, drain fields and electric services and things like that don't mean anything to, to the commission or really to us. Cause that's just spending a little extra money, you know, it, it, but the tree does mean something and I would focus on that. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they'll, they'll. Andrew's point beyond the survey, which is what I have mentioned, he's mentioning getting an arborist to actually give you a report of the tree's health, its age, it's, you know. To kind of build up this, the drama of this tree so that, you know.
That would be what they would put on.
Especially a report as well.
Even the root sometimes it's. So, yeah. All right.
All right. Thank you, David. And thanks for coming to ask us the question. You're still watching, right? Okay, okay. I just want to make sure we're not, we're, we don't miss you on anything. Okay. So let's go ahead and take care of the minutes from, um, our meeting of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Finally. I have a comment for us. Uh, we're just doing the, the minutes for, um, September thirteenth meeting. So I just want to clarify on discussion A, ten fifteen, these hundred fourteen street. So our feedback was, is that they cannot have a single light level flat roof? Okay. So the feedback, I think there was two things that we gave them feedback on was, um, multi-level flat roof. It can't just be a single. Um, and also we were looking for some more detail on the elevations. Also to kind of make it blend into the street a little more because it would be the first flat roof house on that block. And also the architectural drawings need to match what, you know, they need to come in with real. They can't come in with a picture of one thing and show us a drawing of another thing. So they need, you know, when they come in to apply, everything needs to kind of match up. Any other comments? So just update the board. Let me, the minutes for that.
Yeah. And then, and. Match what you're looking, you know, to, to show what they're looking for or what, express what they're looking for. She was showing us a picture of one thing and then the drawings were something else. Yeah.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then also the design should harmonize with the buildings on the block.
Pretty good with that?
Yep.
Take a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
All papers say aye, aye?
Aye.
And bring it back. I'll just sign it again. Okay, um. We do have, um, our discussion from the last time. Did anybody do their, the research on, I think we were talking about, this is regarding driveway.
Ed, Ed did a good, a good bit of research on it. Did a nice job.
Oh, is it on email?
I did not, I did not do any research on it. But yeah, this is a lot of good information, Ed. Thank you.
Yeah, there's really not, it doesn't seem like. Many municipalities really, you know.
This is regarding gravel, right? I'm sorry, I'm still. My phone hasn't downloaded it yet. Can you just give us a, a, a summary, Ed?
Uh, sure. I mean, I just checked other municipalities to see if their zoning ordinances have some specific. Requirements on gravel type or size for gravel driveways. Miami Shores does not allow them at all. El Portal allows them, but does not give any kind of specifications. Uh, North Miami and Miami Dade County both allow them, but also do not really provide any specifications. Um, so after that, I just looked up, you know, what is best practices for gravel driveways. Um, there's a lot of convergence in most of the websites that talk about the importance of three layers of gravel. Starting with, you know, two and a half inch to three inch diameter as a base layer. Then the fifty-seven rock that we talked about last time as an intermediate layer and then a, a, a finish layer that's smaller material. It's usually, um, what they call fines. So it's small gravel combined with dust, with crushed stone dust. Which then kind of helps the stones kind of interlock and form kind of a bonded finish layer for stability. Um, and then it seemed like, and then they had some example, you know, appropriate stones or pea gravel, uh, Jersey Shore gravel. River rock and marble chips. It was a kind of common references and then typical driveway diameter, three eighth to three quarter inch gravel. So I kind of put like a sentence at the end saying, you know, if we're being asked to spec. A material or, or some kind of criteria that, um, maybe. Be, I, I have it in front of me, but.
Yeah, we should have guideline for the finished top layer only, especially since the driveway.
Yeah, I think I had thrown in just something that could be like a, if, if they're looking or asking us for language.
Gravel driveway shall have a finished top layer of traffic bound or dense grade gravel. Such as pea gravel, Jersey shore gravel, marble chips, a river rock with a average of, oh, I love this. Perfect. Come on up. I mean, you want to put that forward? Has anybody got any comments on?
I'm not clear on the term traffic bound.
Yeah. So it was in just one of the websites that I like left a link for. They said that top layer is often referred to as dense grade or traffic bound gravel.
That's just an industry term.
So, yeah, yeah.
I never heard it before.
So, so traffic bound or dense grade are, it's basically pea grade, pre-gravel, Jersey Shore gravel, marble.
Yeah, I mean, exactly. So I think that is the industry standard reference for what you call that upper layer, that finish layer. And then those stones were examples of common uses for that finish layer.
So can we? Since it's, you, you traffic bound or dense grade gravel, shall we maybe just say have a finished top layer of dense grade gravel? To make it less confusing, just have, just use one of the terms?
Sure, yeah.
And then. Cause I was like traffic bound. I caught my attention too. And then such as pea gravel, yeah, I think this is perfect. It gives a definition to what, and I'm, you know, the sizes obviously.
Do we want to say anything about colors or?
Um, maybe colored to be.
Is that, you know, those kind, those rocks.
Color to be determined by the board, yeah.
Shades, right? Because, you know, marble chips or pea gravel, you can get it in darker grays. You can get it in browns. You can get it, you know, buff off whites.
Seen coquinas, which are like whites and grays, which are very nice.
Have a lot of.
Yeah.
Should we just say?
They're all pretty. I mean. You know. I think it'd be hard pressed.
I think it'd be hard pressed for someone to get some that were really offensive to us, right? Like, I don't think they manufacture fluorescent pink, you know, yeah, I think they're all kind of neutral stone colors, right?
So should we say samples shall be provided and color approved by the planning board?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we used to have people come in with bags, like, like zip locks and just drop it on the table and we'd go, okay.
Support thing. So should we make a motion? Or what do we do?
No, I mean, do, does somebody like that idea of just saying the color to be determined by the planning?
Yes. We ask people to bring colors and roof tile color samples, right? Doesn't have to be physical stones. They can send a picture just like we do for other materials. So I don't think that's too onerous.
Okay. Samples. Or approval. Okay. So we'll add to this sentence. Samples should be provided for approval and color due determined by the planning board. Everybody go with that?
Yes.
Any opposed to it? Okay. So what, will this, we'll make under the discussion for better defined gravel, we'll add this language or we'll send up this language. And, um, yeah, and I think everything else we, there was nothing else that we had to.
No, the other thing was the color for the painted concrete that we just said we were gonna refer to the same, pre-approved colors.
Or see the board.
Your walls, right? So.
Or have the planning board, yeah.
I just want to make one point that, um, we're not talking about this going into a definition section, right?
Uh, that's gonna be up to the attorney to figure out how they're gonna, because these are all the bullet points and then the attorney's gonna figure out how to.
How to put it into code. Yeah. Cause I would be, I would be worried if it ends up in definitions because things can get lost. As far as it's, it's a really specific regulation, not really a definition.
Yeah. I mean, I would imagine they write it like we did the roof permit where it says metal roofs can be these colors. You know, like, you know.
I would hope so, yeah.
You know, everything within the same order.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Plus it's also going to come back to us. So we can have a little.
Okay, good. Good, good.
And they have the, the, the proposed language.
Okay, yeah. I'll make sure to remember that.
All right. Ed, great work. Thank you for the research.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other comments on the driveways? Okay.
Are they, I guess that you said they're reviewing the swale as a separate item that they're, that are upcoming.
They're gonna do that at their October meeting. I guess they wanted to get this through the attorney so the attorney could get at least writing it.
Yeah.
But I don't see why they would pass.
Yeah, I mean, they're all kind of wanting the same, but.
All right. For the business, our next meeting will be October eighteen.
I mean, I'm so sorry, October fourth.
I was gonna say, see you guys in five weeks.
October fourth. And then it's Monday eight.
Make a motion, adjourn.
My, my comment on this microphone would be, would be, um, maybe, I don't know how y'all feel, but maybe a little bit more speakers for us. Cause, cause we're hearing, I'm hearing Ed from over.